Around for a couple of weeks.
I was good tonight, I really have with that, huh? All right, so I called the October 1st Planning Board meeting to order at 6:30. First on the agenda, this is a public comment section, and this is if anybody here has anything that they'd like to have us contemplate at a future meeting, but it's not on our agenda tonight, so we entertain that if anybody has that desire to do so. Okay, then we go to public hearing, and we've got Annual Fall 2019. Oh, minutes, I skipped that, I'm sorry, Paul.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of September 24, 2019 as corrected.
Okay, any comments, all in favor?
Aye.
So now we get on to public hearing. Annual Fall 2019 Town Meeting zoning articles. Article 5 to amend Section 240-240H5, dimensional requirements, and this is on behalf of the Planning Board and our town planner will speak to that issue.
Evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Tom Bottom, the town planner here in Falmouth, Mass., and presenting on Article 5. You may recall when we were doing the site plan review for the Dome in the Business Redevelopment District, the bylaw said three stories and didn't quantify what three stories was. Elsewhere in the zoning bylaw, it talks about how many floors and how many stories typically. There are four exemptions. There's no exemption for the Business Redevelopment Zone, so in discussion with the Board previously, we have drafted the following. Article 5 to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw article. For the last time, hopefully, we're going to go with, that's 67? XLVI, thank you very much, not 67. That's 65, 66.
Forty-six, whatever it is.
Do we have 67? Pardon me, Business Redevelopment by amending Section 240-240H5 under dimensional requirements by adding the words "two and a half stories" not to exceed 35 feet. The upper half story may be expanded by special permit of the Planning Board in conjunction with the established design guidelines for large-scale development in order to clarify the maximum number of stories allowed as noted elsewhere in the bylaw, including Section 240-70 maximum building height. So here we show what changes. This clarifies that two and a half stories is the zoning for the top floor in the Business Redevelopment District, but on a specimen of the Planning Board, it could be expanded. So that new language would add "two and a half stories not to exceed," and the upper half story may be expanded by specimen of the Planning Board in conjunction with the established design guidelines for large-scale development. The Planning Board has been discussing and hearing amendments to their design guidelines that we have been working on and talking about for a few meetings. It's anticipated that the Board will wrap up that discussion and adopt those guidelines prior to town meeting. So we're on the floor at town meeting, we'll have the established guidelines established as well as the recommended zoning. Why is that, as we've talked about before? In the zoning bylaw currently, it describes building heights with four exemptions. Those four exemptions are, in agricultural uses, there's a maximum of 50 feet; in public use districts, there's a maximum building height of three stories not to exceed 50 feet; in light industrial B and C use districts, the maximum building height shall be 40 feet and the maximum number of stories shall be three; and in D, by specimen of the Zoning Board of Appeals on lots or two acres or more, accessory structure should have a maximum height of 25 feet. So you see, in most, all of these instances, we identify the height and the number of floors. In the discussion we had following the Dome discussion, and talking with town council, and talking with the Building Commissioner, everyone agreed that it really wasn't specified, you can't really go back and figure out what the intent was, so in this case, this would go back and sort of clarify what that actual number of floors is.
Now, I'm going to remind the Board that we are listening tonight, because this is a public hearing for the public to put any input in on this if they wish. So now, having said that, is there anybody from the public who wishes to make any comments on this proposed bylaw? Well, that was easy. Okay, so, the second one, Article 6, to add a large-scale, ground-mounted, solar overlay district, and the proponent is Jay Zavala, and who will be presenting this, please?
For the Board's edification, in your packets and on the screen is simply the language from the petition article, the numbers highlighted in bold are the actual lot numbers. This is the map showing the area proposed for the new overlay district, and those are two slides that essentially show what's on the ground right now, because as you know, in the overlay district, one of those things that was contemplated was putting solar in areas that are already impacted. You don't want to go and cut down a forest to make things more green by putting solar up. So in the places where we've adopted the solar overlay district currently, those areas are disturbed mostly by mining and things like this. In this case, the fields are largely grass and used for parking by the Barnstable County Fair, and at that, I'll get out of the way.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, I'm Jay Zavala, the President of the Board of Directors of the Barnstable County Agricultural Society, and we're here before you this evening to ask for a positive recommendation at a town meeting for Article Number 6. This is to see if the town will vote to amend the official zoning map by adding an additional large-scale ground-mounted solar overlay district along Nathan Alice Highway on multiple parcels, currently used as parking and fairground event space where tree cover and landforms have previously been impacted. The areas are essentially open, grass fields with gravel access roads, a site unused most of the year, and are underutilized asset. This is an overview of the area of request. I might mention that we also have properties on the east, southeast portion of the highway, on the Schumitt Road, and we're not planning anything on that area. A little background and operations of the Cape Cod Fairgrounds, it's owned and operated by the Barnstable County Agricultural Society. We are a nonprofit organization with a focus on charity and education. It was founded in 1844, and this year is our 175th anniversary. Ordinarily, we would be celebrating, but unfortunately, we can't. We've been successful, we've been a very, we've been a good citizen of the town of Falmouth and the greater Cape Cod, but our resources are limited, and we might even say we're a bit brittle over the last few years in that the resources that we count on for maintaining the facility just haven't come through. Of course, we're always weather-dependent, and so the number of activities that we have out at the fairgrounds are impacted in a number of different ways. We continue, when I said we are a good citizen, we continue to pay our bills, and we hope we can continue to do that for the next 25 to celebrate our 200th birthday. But in the course of doing that, we have to find alternative sources of revenue. We want to maintain the fairgrounds as it currently operates, but we also have to take care of the infrastructure of the 83 acres, and the only way to do that is to find another means of revenue. In the course of doing that, we turned to the Cape Cod Commission for a feasibility study, a planned analysis, to identify opportunities to enhance the fairgrounds and for its viability and character, and encourage onsite improvements that are consistent with local regulations and community character. The report noted that parking lots lack appropriate organization in order to maximize the parking area's capabilities. Additionally, the report stated that the fairgrounds may want to investigate the viability of solar panels over some of its parking areas. When the Cape Cod Commission came through and offered its recommendations, it did so with the permission of town management, and in the course of that, it gave our general manager, Wendy Brown, who's also here this evening, to start scouting and looking around for what kinds of opportunities might be available. Well, we found a SMART program here in our own state, and I don't know what the, I know what the acronym, but it has to do with conserving solar energy. And in the course of doing so, we put out a RFP for a project, and the firm that succeeded, who met our requirements not only in terms of being responsive, but also being responsible, is Soul Systems, and they too are here this evening with us. So the existing parking lots, there's no impact to public services, school, water, sewer, traffic, emergency services. The lots are already cleared, no clearing of trees will be required for the project, no new paving is proposed. Carport layover based off of engineering parking layout plans have purposely not included Lot Two, we have purposefully not included Lot Two, as I mentioned earlier, in this request, which is actually the largest of the lots, given it's bordered on all sides by Butters Homes. This is a concept carport layout. You'll notice on the north and south side, on the west, we have those parking areas that we wish to turn into the solar array, and on the northeast side of the fairgrounds I'm going to invite our consultant, Reni Friedman, to come up and share some thoughts with you regarding compliance and support of our local initiatives.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you for having us here tonight. As Jay mentioned, for the record, Reni Friedman, Director of Project Development at Soul Systems, we're a solar development and financier. First, just, we're very excited to be partnered with the fairgrounds on this opportunity and this project. It's a very unique and appropriate project. As Jay mentioned before, there's no clearing of trees that are required whatsoever to accomplish this, there's no new paving that will be required to accomplish this. We've done a lot of environmental studies already on the property, there will be no environmental impacts due to this project, which is a great opportunity. Something else that's really unique and great about this project is it is very much in alignment with some of the local policies and initiatives that are in place. For example, the town local comprehensive plan has three energy public policies. Specifically, if you look at Number 1 and 2, Number 1, the municipality will provide leadership and set the example in carbon footprint reduction. Amending these areas to include the solar overlays zone will certainly accomplish that goal. And public policy Number 2, will strongly support the use of appropriate renewable energy sources. Again, kind of like to highlight the word appropriate there, these are already existing cleared fields, there's no new paving, there's no new clearing that needs to be done for this. The sites currently function as parking lots, and they will continue to function as parking lots. Just to take that a step further, again, the Cape Cod Commission, their regional policy plan has some defined energy goals in it. Again, I don't need to read through them all, we have handouts of the presentation if you'd like as well, but the project is very much in support of those goals as well, along with the Cape Cod blue economy. So the project is really very much in alignment with these goals as well, and the first step of this project would be approving Article 6. And just one thing for a quick update, as folks may or may not know, with any solar project, the interconnection process, especially in Massachusetts, is a very key component of the project. We've actually been in the interconnection process for quite some time. We submitted our application last year, at the end of last year. We do have a draft system impact study back, it looks very favorable, and we're actually hoping to have an executed system impact study in the next couple of months. And again, this is just to show that we are committed to the project as a whole. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, are there any questions?
I don't know, does, well, we will, but I'm wondering if there's any, we listened, but does the Board need any clarification on this, because this is new to us? Okay, now, from the public, please, are there any comments or questions? Yes, and please, as you know, come up to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Board, Grant Walker, 71 Philadelphia Street, and my question is, could someone spell out what the dimensional requirements are, lot, minimum lot size or maximum, the setbacks and so on, for the overlay district?
For the overlay district, Tom, do you have that at hand?
Yes, ma'am, I do. The minimum site is seven acres. The setback for solar is 35 feet where solar abuts solar. Where solar abuts a residential or agricultural use, it's a 100-foot setback, as it is in our current district. So there are a number of lots that Cape Cod Fairground owns that are smaller than that. If they intended to put solar on those, they'd have to discombine those through an 81X plan or an ANR plan, but seven acres, 100-foot setback where solar abuts residential.
So then my assumption is that Mr. Walker's question is, where are they proposed to do it? Do they meet all those requirements? Have you had a chance to?
Well, we don't have an application in front of us for their solar arrays, we are simply looking at rezoning the property. In the event that the Board makes a favorable recommendation and town meeting votes favorably, then they'll come back to us with the project for site plan approval, much like we did with Lawrence Lynch.
Okay, Jim?
Well, this is why I had a question, I waited till this time. This is a charitable organization, they are subject to the Dover Amendment and don't even have to pay attention to our zoning bylaws, and I'm just wondering if it makes sense for them to encumber themselves with these setbacks that we have as opposed to just go ahead and doing it?
You know, this is part of our discussion that comes after this, I wondered if you had a question?
Well, I was questioning the setbacks too, I saw the layouts with no determination of setbacks at all, and I've just, I just don't think they've thought that out, and I'm just saying maybe they don't even have to be here. They could just go ahead and do it without.
Oh, no, it has to be rezoned for that, so we're not going there right now. Is there anybody else from the public? Yes, Mike?
As a younger man, when Nate Ellis helped run the county fairgrounds, I volunteered, and I actually have done some surveying, and I think it's important that we encourage the fairgrounds, and I'm in support of this article, so.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Grant?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Grant Walker. Just a follow-up, if I may, if I understood what Mr. Bott said, would I be correct in saying that the setbacks and the lot dimension are the same as for the previous ground-mounted solar overlay district along, that was set up along Blacksmith Shop Road? Are they going to be, or are those the same that he articulated, the same ones?
I think we'd have to ask the proponents of this article, because there was a nod that I saw when you were, when Tom was describing it.
So it's a little hard to see on this plan, just because it's so zoomed out, but, and again, this is just a very high-level concept. As Mr. Bott mentioned, we would, if we get a favorable determination tonight and a favorable vote at the town meeting, we would come back with a formal site plan application, it would be a more finely tuned engineered plan at that point, but, but yes, we plan on complying with all the requirements of the solar overlay zone as it currently stands.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this? Okay, then we will move on to Article 7, to rezone 64 Technology Park Drive from PU to LIC, and who will speak for the applicant?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself of this hearing.
That's fine.
My name is Mike DeGiano, I'm the Executive Director of the Falmouth Economic Development and Industrial Corporation. We're the owners of 64 Technology Drive. I think maybe most of the Board knows that the Falmouth EDIC is a nonprofit economic development organization. Our mission is to encourage economic development in the town of Falmouth. I think our ownership of this four-point acre lot was kind of a leftover piece from the development of the tech park, which the EDIC undertook in the 90s. And this particular parcel is, as I said, 4.8 acres in size. It is also the site of a water tank that is used by the town. I'm going to just hand out another document here, which gives you a little bit clearer close-up picture of the lot. You can see the tank.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hit the down button in those two more slides.
Oh, you got more of the...
Yeah. There, that gives you another shot of the, of the lot. As I said, the total size of lot is a little over 4.8 acres. The easement that the town has for the water tank is approximately 2.3, almost 2.4 acres, and that basically takes place kind of at the very top part of the lot here. So the, the portion of the lot that's available for development would be the north and the east, and as you can see from the topography, it's pretty challenged in terms of the amount of slope that we have, and I would say it's a small piece to try to construct a building in there, I think would be economically challenging. So, you know, the EDIC, as I mentioned, is nonprofit, we're looking for ways to generate revenue, we don't get any funding from the town, so we need to try to find sources of revenue so we can continue to undertake projects like renovation of the Falmouth Station, which we've done, and the Main Street Connection Program with the high-speed fiber that's currently going on now with Open Cape, those are the kinds of projects we undertake, but we need to look for funding. And so we took a look at what kind of uses we might undertake on the leftover piece of the lot, and we do have interest from a solar developer that would like to do ground-mounted solar on the north and the east side of the water tank, outside of the water tank easement area. We think that could be a viable economic use. So when we took a look at what would need to be done, the current zoning is public use, that does not allow for ground-mounted solar, and when we looked at the other zoning districts in the town, ILC does allow for a ground-mounted solar as a primary use, so that was the reason for our petition to change from public use to the ground-mounted solar.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions, for lack of understanding, I mean, not to debate this?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, Paul?
Mrs. Gianno, the topography drops about 50 feet to the north. How much of that do you anticipate covering with solar panels?
We don't have a plan yet from the solar company, so, you know, it's uncertain at this point, undetermined.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Yes, please come up to the podium and state your name.
Hi, my name is Dan Webb, I'm an abatter to the subject lot, although I'm not really here to speak as an abatter. I understand what EDIC is trying to do here, and I, and I respect and I support that, I, you know, I'm very much in support of deploying more solar in all forms, and I'd be happy to have ground-mounted solar as a, as a neighbor on this lot, but I think there are some, some flaws with the way it's being proposed, and I think there's a much better way to do it. I see two... I see two flaws with what's happening here. And I have discussed this with Michael and we've exchanged some emails. The first flaw I see is that what we'll end up with here, as proposed, is an island of light industrial C completely surrounded on all sides by light industrial B. To me, that is textbook spot zoning. And I think that's motivated by a flaw in the bylaws that needs to be fixed. There was an article at last fall town meeting a year ago proposing to allow ground-mounted solar by right in all the industrial districts. It came close to passing but did not pass. The way this is proposed, it will create kind of a quick, one-shot economic benefit for the EDIC, which is good, they need, they need money to do their work. But I think the right way to do this is to rezone this lot as light industrial B, since it is surrounded on all sides by light industrial B, and then to amend the zoning bylaws to allow ground-mounted solar as a primary or accessory use by right in light industrial B. So my proposal would be to, to do this at spring town meeting, to do those two things. Rezone this lot as LIB and amend the zoning bylaws to allow ground-mounted solar by right in LIB. If you step back and take a look at the big picture, we've set aside less than one-half of one percent of our zoning area in Falmouth for light industrial B. That is industrial land. You have to ask yourself, why would we not allow solar farms by right on that industrial land? Especially given that state law explicitly prohibits, quote, "unreasonable regulation of solar." So that's my suggestion on how to do this differently to create a much broader envir- economic benefit that would apply to the whole light industrial B zone and not just this one lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes? Yes, Megan.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm Megan Amsler and I am the Chair of the Falmouth Energy Committee. We had earlier, or sorry, prior to town meeting last fall, submitted a letter to the planning board indicating our support for appropriately-sighted solar projects and our lack of support for clear-cutting of trees to put up solar. And while I completely understand, as Dan Webb just also articulated, the need for the EDIC to explore other revenues and that solar is a great way to do that, we don't feel that the clear-cutting of the trees on this lot is an appropriate use. And there's, there's another really nice lot down the road in the Tech Park that's wide open, big parking lot, that pretend, you know, potentially could have some conversation about covering over their parking lot with solar because we feel that the ecosystem services that the trees provide in this area far outweigh the benefit of solar panels and, you know, cutting them down. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Nick Lowell and I live up in North Falmouth. But I happen to also be sort of in a butter in that I'm renting space from Dan Webb's building just to the south here for my small business. And one of my concerns is that this lot as public use now is not suitable for small businesses and particularly in my case, manufacturing business. But if I were to see the zoning change on this, I'd want it to change to something that would allow for a tech-type business such as my own or sent many of the, any, any, many other types of businesses that are in Falmouth that are on this technology, manufacturing, engineering, development type of work. And there have been a lot of businesses in town that have moved up to born because they have apparently a more permissive zoning or there are more opportunities up there. I'm not exactly sure why. But I would, I would rather see this rezoned to LIB. So it would potentially, just looking way ahead, you know, maybe one of the abutting parcels could expand into that at some point, giving them a little bit more room to grow. I hope that maybe some year that'll be my business that is looking for a home to grow. I'm not there yet, but I do like to just think that there will continue to be opportunities for businesses to grow and to grow in the Tech Park. The second thing is, I kind of agree with Megan. And while we're talking about rezoning and we're not talking about a specific use for solar in this situation, I would have a hard time with just clear-cutting the trees to put up solar in this one lot. And it being that this is publicly-owned property, I think it is worth just discussing that that's the direction that it would be going. And it doesn't make sense to me to put up solar where there are trees right now and have that be it. It'd be a different picture if it was a building that was helping our economy grow and put solar on the roof. Okay, times two multiplier there, but just cutting the trees down to put solar doesn't make sense, especially when you have massive steamship authority parking lot right next door that has nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Grant Walker again. I would like to support the three previous speakers. I'm concerned that what Mr. Webb referred to as spot zoning would be central or one of the issues there, and this would set a precedent, so that could happen elsewhere. I don't know if that's necessarily a good thing. I support what Ms. Amsler said. It's not a good idea to take down the trees. As a matter of fact, I believe that is explicitly discouraged in the Massachusetts Guidelines for Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Overlay Districts. And thirdly, yes, I support what Mr. Lowell said. Let's promote business right here and jobs and so on, right here in our own town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you all for your comments and...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I address the, the question that's come up a couple of times about spot zoning?
Of course.
So this question has come up previously about spot zoning. And in fact, in two thousand twelve, it was brought up when we rezoned this parcel right here for LIC on Thomas Landers Road. Essentially, it was surrounded by AGAA and was rezoned for LIC. The Attorney General, in her review, and the Attorney General reviews all projects that come in, all zoning articles that come in from towns, not from cities, mind you, but from towns. The Attorney General quotes that the town can vote to treat a certain parcel within the town differently from other parcels as long as the town does so for a legitimate zoning purpose. Spot zoning only exists where there is a singling out of a particular parcel for different treatment for that of the surrounding area, producing without rational planning objectives, zoning qualifications, that failed treat properties in a uniform manner. Based on the documents submitted by the town pursuant to General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Thirty-two, we cannot conclude that the town's vote lacks a legitimate planning purpose or it is arbitrary and unreasonable or substantially unrelated to public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. On the contrary, the documents submitted by the town reflected the planning board held a hearing on January thirty-one, two thousand twelve, turning over that recommend inclusion of the parcel in the light industrial C district. That the planning board recommended inclusion of the parcel in the light industrial C district on the basis that, on the basis that it was appropriate and consistent with the stated goals of the local comprehensive plan to extend light industrial zoning to increase areas for contractors and light industry. And that for a part of its recommendations for the adoption of Article Nine, the planning board stated that while it's working with other property owners in the Thomas B. Flanders, she said Flanders, road area to extend light industrial C to additional parcels. Based on the materials submitted to the town, submitted us by the town, it appears that on the record that the amendments adopted in Article Nine can be further viewed as furthering the public welfare as part of a legitimate planning process. So to put that in short order, we're actually repeating something that we did in two thousand twelve, which has been reviewed by the Attorney General and determined not to be spot zoning. And I don't believe it is a legitimate concern on this particular parcel. I won't speak to all the other suggestions, but regarding the issue of spot zoning, the Attorney General has weighed in previously and said, that's not what this is.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, we have now heard...
Could I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
It appears that, and I can't read it well, is why I have to ask it as a question. The, it's light industrial C there to the right, the dark gray. And the lot we're talking about is the one immediately adjoining it? So it would be adjoining a light industrial C?
No.
No, so where, where is that wrong?
I thought that was the one.
Yeah.
So this is the parcel.
Oh, thank you.
You can see the font very well from here.
That's good.
But it says to rezone PU, public use, to LIC. So it is that parcel there. And in fact, when you blow up the zoning map, you see there's a little thread of zoning that sort of crosses across the street, though typically you don't zone streets, but there's a little piece that sort of bleeds across there for whatever reason. But no, this would be, you know, fairly analogous. Well, actually, presently, the property is zoned public use. So it's essentially an island as it is right now. It's sort of hooked up on a corner with other public use. But as discussed before, it is one parcel. It is being suggested for rezoning. And the Attorney General's reviewed that as not spot zoning if there's a legitimate public purpose for that.
But it's surrounded by LIB.
They don't have to be contiguous.
Right. Thank you. Paul?
I think Mr. Webb raises a very interesting concept about changing it to LIB.
Well, we're, we're running into where we need to go. So may I, okay. Because the, our recommendation to the warrant is due tomorrow for public, if it's going to be published in the warrant. And so I would like, if it's all right with all of you, to go ahead with these article by article and either vote them to the warrant or not vote them to the warrant as they are. So that they get into the warrant. Otherwise, what goes into the warrant is that we'll make our recommendation on town meeting four, which is not liked by town meeting members.
Wasn't Paul speaking to an either or situation?
No, that's, that's when we go and we discuss it. So no, that's, that's why I stopped it. And then we get to this article and then we discuss it if we want to change anything. Okay? So on Article Five, this is essentially our own article. There was no public comment. And if there's no further comment from the board, I would entertain a motion that we recommend it to the warrant as printed.
So moved.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that one's been recommended as printed. Now we go to... Yes.
Five, zero, zero?
Yes. We move on to Article Six, to add a large-scale so, ground-mounted solar overlay district.
Shouldn't Jim be here for...
Well, he can be, yes. He could come back in, but it's up to him whether he wants to or not.
It's just Article Seven that he...
Right. So Article Six. You missed the vote on the first one, Jim.
I heard you, I was wondering what you're doing without calling me back in.
I figured you'd walk back in.
Well, you got to come to my other article and I can walk back out again, so...
Yeah, I know. Article Six. This is to add a large-scale ground-mounted solar overlay district on behalf of Jay Zavala. And this is at the fairgrounds. Is there any discussion on this?
I don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, then I would need a motion as before to recommend it as printed to the warrant.
So...
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we go on to Article Seven.
Also unanimous?
Pardon?
Was that also unanimous?
Yeah, it was unanimous. Jim was voting on this one too, so, okay. And so we move on to Article Seven and, I don't know, Jim, you want to burrow under the table to recuse yourself?
I always leave.
Well, I know you do.
Because I think that's the way to do it.
It is. So Article Seven, to rezone sixty-four Technology Park Drive from PU to LIC. And Paul, you go first because you wanted to discuss this further.
I think Mr. Webb raised a very interesting point about LIB and opening up for solar by right throughout the town. But I don't think you can do that without looking at the consequences of that throughout the town. I think it's a good idea, but I don't know what that means. I don't know how many properties are all like that and how that would be affected. So I think it'd be a little premature to kind of vote in at this time. If this vote's positive for town meeting, it's something we may want to consider at a future time by the planning board.
If this vote too?
If, if this passes, we may want to consider in the future, considering what Mr. Webb is raising about allowing solar panels by right in a zoning area LIB.
That was brought up before, Paul, though, and it was voted down. It was closed, but it was voted down for various reasons. One of which is that there is housing in those other industrial.
Can I clarify something?
And no, I'm sorry, but you can clarify it on town meeting floor, depending upon how this goes.
Can I clarify factual error in the conversation?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I know, but I appreciate you letting me speak at this point.
No residential uses are allowed in light industrial B, there are none.
Light industrial A.
But it was, the, the one that was turned down is changing all to accept solar.
The previous one included light industrial A.
Yeah.
But light, light industrial B has no housing.
Yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood where you were going with that, I'm sorry. So, Charlotte?
May I ask the presenter a question?
Of course.
What, what is the impact of the delay until spring? Because Mr. Webb's suggestion does have a lot of logic behind it. And if there were that delay, what's the impact on your project?
So the only thing I would offer up to that is some of the federal tax incentives for solar are declining. So next year, they go from, right now, they're thirty percent tax credit. Next year, they go to twenty-six percent. The following year, it drops to twenty-two percent.
Is that a state year starting in July? What, how, what's the timing on that?
It's, I, yeah, I think it's a calendar year. Yeah. So, so the, the, I think the effect of the delay might be, I don't know for sure, but might be that the, the kinds of proposals that the EDIC would get from solar developers will be not as, not as beneficial financially because there'll be less tax credits. So I think that's the main effect of the delay.
Could I ask one more question? How much clear-cutting would you be doing in order to make this economically a good thing for you?
Well, my own, we don't have a plan from the solar developer that's interested or other solar developers, so I can't answer that specifically. My sense of it, though, is there will be a lot of tree removal in order to be able to take advantage of, although the slope does allow, you know, for good exposure, I think for the panels, they are going to have to take the trees down. I don't think that there's any doubt about that.
Because that's a relatively small piece. How big is that piece?
The piece that in question is about two and a half acres.
Right. Small. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else on the board?
No.
No.
Okay, what's the general feeling now? Remember, we either vote to recommend it to the warrant as printed, we can say we don't recommend it, or we can make, suggest changes to the warrant.
I can't recommend it.
Yeah, I would recommend we don't recommend it. We've got two competing goods here and it's such a, a small amount to make such a big change in that area. John?
I prefer to support solar. I, I would like to recommend this article.
Okay, so we've got one vote to recommend it. Free...
I vote in favor.
Okay, so that's two in favor of it. I'm, I'm really torn because generally, we don't want to have trees taken down.
Right.
I just recommend, I'm just... I just recommend, I just say that if we recommend this, it still has to go to town meeting to get approved. We're not approving it, we're supposing the idea of it.
Recommending, so what we would be...
If that's what we vote.
What we would be doing then is to simply, because it looks like we're gonna be split on this, we would simply be recommending it for town meeting's consideration.
If I may, in, and this is not in the solar overlay district...
Right.
But in the solar overlay district, the parameters are there setbacks, and there's a maximum amount of clearing. So the maximum amount of clearing in the solar overlay district is a maximum of two acres. And that anticipates that a lot is essentially seven acres as a minimum. So while it's not proportional to say this four-acre lot is the minimum size for, for a solar overlay lot, but we do note that the maximum clearing for, in the solar overlay district is two acres. Now, there are no parameters for how we do solar in LIC, it just says solar. So they'll be then with a site plan, if it's passed, and the board will have to determine that. But there aren't really any parameters in our zoning bylaw for solar in LIC, it's simply a one-liner.
There's, there's one other thing that comes sort of belatedly to my mind. Where are we to go with the delay till spring and make it a uniform rezoning of LIB? We're really opening it up to a great deal more clearcutting. Kind of working against ourselves.
Well, unless you're talking about, uh, ground-mounted in parking lots, the canopies, the carports, because a lot of these businesses do have parking lots, so it would be allowing them to set them up there. I, I wish I could see where they were gonna go, that if we had a, a plan like the fairgrounds did, you know, it makes, making the decision a lot easier, and that's why I'm not comfortable saying yes to this.
I'm not either, for a, a lot of reasons. I support solar, but I'm just not comfortable with all the clearcutting here and without a plan to know what they're planning to do.
Yeah, I mean, if it was this strip here, I mean, that's one thing, not knowing, I mentioned the slope, that's a north, northeast-facing slope. I, I don't know, I just don't see...
Yeah, it is a north, northeast-facing slope.
Yeah.
So it's, you're gonna be hard pressed to catch the solar rays.
Yeah, it's...
For optimum.
Yeah, it's not the, it's the best location. And it's the top, there's the top of the ridge there, slopes down. So I, i- if I, if I could see it, I'd, I'd feel better about it, but since I can't see anything, I can't make an informed decision.
So Tom, we're a split vote on this.
I think a split means you don't have a positive recommendation for town meeting.
We do not have a positive recommendation, no. And I suspect if individuals on the board wish to speak their mind at town meeting, they can do so, but not as a board vote.
So in this case, because this is new to me, a, 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 a split vote, well, we've got five members?
There are five members who can vote on it, and three of us say no, but Bob and I have different reasoning from Charlotte's reasoning, but it's still a no.
I think a no's a no, yeah.
Yeah, and so it is...
It's three to two.
It's, that means that there is no positive recommendation at town meeting.
Right.
So are you recommending it with a three-two vote indefinite postponement?
Yeah, it would be IP.
Yeah.
So then I need a, a motion for IP.
I'll move that we vote IP for Article Seven.
Is there a second? Okay. And understanding that there are multiple reasons on the board for doing that.
Yeah.
All in favor of IP?
Aye.
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 So the vote is three-two.
And this doesn't mean that they can't bring it forward and speak to town meeting.
Right.
It's just that...
That's the planning board recommendation.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank, I really thank all of you for your participation in this. Okay, so we move on, and Jim, you can reseat yourself. We move on to planning board decisions, the applicant, Harry O.
Oh, sorry.
Not gonna try it again because I didn't do it quite right. Site plan review application to construct an accessory apartment at six-eighty Quaker Road, Landmark. Excuse me, Landmark Site Design, and we have a motion here. Bob, you want to read the motion?
Sure, yeah. October first, two thousand nineteen draft motion that the planning board votes to approve the application, Harry O. Anesian, for the construction of a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit within a single-family residence located at six-eighty Quaker Road under Article Thirty-nine, site plan review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled six-eighty Quaker Road Plot Plan of Land in Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Landmark Site Design dated August fourth, two thousand nineteen, scale one inch equals twenty feet, along with four plans for the primary residence and accessory dwelling unit with the following conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved, any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section two forty-one eighty-three B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued till the planning board, planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months and every calendar year owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner signed by the property owner attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner-occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented but not both during the five months the owner-occupant may be absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months and weekly, monthly rental, summer rental, so-called, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling or access, nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, the property will continue to be maintained as a four-bedroom property, no additional bedrooms shall be added.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and is there further discussion on the board on this decision? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. The next decision is College Light Opera Company, Inc., site plan review application to construct a new rehearsal hall and administrative building as well as the addition of a two-car garage to an existing student housing building at fifty-four Chappaqua Road, Hoadley Martinez Architects. And we again have a decision here, do you want to...
Yeah.
Okay, stretch your voice again.
Yeah. Decision summary sheet motion that the planning board voted to approve the application of College Light Opera Company, Inc., under Article Thirty-nine, site plan review of the zoning bylaw for the construction of a new eight thousand eight hundred five square foot, one-story rehearsal hall and administrative building, bond as well as construct a new two-car garage attached to an existing student housing building as depicted on site plans entitled College Light Opera Company, fifty-four Chappaqua Road, West Falmouth, Mass., oh two five seven four, prepared by Holmes McGrath, Inc., dated June third, two thousand nineteen, with latest revision of September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, scale of one inch equals thirty feet, along with landscaping plans entitled College Light Opera Company, fifty-four Chappaqua Road, West Falmouth, Mass., oh two five seven four, prepared by Kimberly Mercurio Landscape Architecture dated September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, with latest revision date of September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, scale of one inch equals thirty feet, and elevations entitled College Light Opera Company, fifty-four Chappaqua Road, West Falmouth, Mass., oh two five seven four, prepared by Hoadley Martinez Architects, dated September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, with the following conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved, any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board at a public meeting to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section two forty-one eighty-three B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued, no planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Upon substantial completion of the project in accordance with Section two forty-one ninety-three C, the applicant will be required to submit an as-built plan for review by the board, planning department staff, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. Two, if any work is required in the right of way, then the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit or street opening permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the approved permit. Three, the applicant will keep the roadway to the newly constructed building, bond cleared to eighteen feet in width and fourteen feet in height, with a gravel or stone drive to allow for the fire department's apparatus to have sufficient access to the building. Four, the landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the above references, reference plans, and shall be maintained in a healthy state.
A second please?
Second.
Is there any discussion by the board, any further to this or comments on this decision? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have a number of things under planning board discussion. Borrego Solar request for administrative approval, zero Blacksmith Shop Road, and this is in regard to a commissioning bond to meet town requirements. And Tom, did you wish to present anything?
Yes, if, if I may, in the last section of your packet is the email and correspondence regarding the site plan approval. So in an email from Ed Kirk, who is in attendance this evening, Mr. Kirk notes, as you may recall, the site of plan approval for the project requires a decommissioning bond in the amount of three hundred seventy-three dollars, eight hundred seven, uh, three hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars to address the possible eventuality that the lessee, as an operator of the solar array, did not remove the component parts at the end of the project. As the owner and lesser Lawrence Lynch Realty Corp. should be a party to those benefits, who benefit, the bond should stand. Borrego and Lynch are hereby submitting a letter agreement dated August thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, to the effect that when Borrego delivers the bond to the town, the bond should name Lawrence Lynch Realty Corporation as an obliquee. I presume, and I'm hopeful that there will be no need for a formal hearing in which the planning board amends its decision to identify Lawrence Lynch as an obliquee, but in the event it would be required, please let me know, and we can initiate that process. So you have in your packet the letter from Mr. Kirk, essentially to that effect. The zoning bylaw notes in the financial surety that the surety, uh... Give me just a moment. So the financial surety is to ensure that the cost removal in the event of the town must remove the installation and remediate the landscape. So the bylaw contemplates that it might be the town's obligation, but I believe as long as the town is noted in the, in the decommissioning bond, it's likely fine, we can address this with the town council to ensure that is the case. But to Mr. Kirk's question, does the board want to have a reopen hearing and discussion on this, or is it the board's pleasure to consider this administrative change and leave it to staff, the town planner, and town council to ensure that the decommissioning bond adequately protects both the town and the applicant?
I, I think if town council approves it, then that's whatever town council says. I have no problem with administratively adding this, correcting the language or adding the language, whatever's required.
So if the board feels this way, we need to move and vote that we are happy to have administrative approval on this issue.
Yes.
Yes, so, so, so moved, seconded, okay, so it's moved by Bob, seconded by John, that we are going to allow administrative approval on this issue for correct language. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, now we have town meeting article for the Borrego Solar easement, and this has to do, as you know, when we were looking at this, that the roadway in is across town-owned land. And so Tom is going to speak to that and present it.
Okay, we don't have anything here.
No, we don't have anything in our packet.
Actually, there is in the slides.
Oh, okay.
But we heard exhaustively when the whole thing came up, right.
Yeah, it was a slide...
Page down from here, isn't it the very next page?
Yeah, so here we are at Article Twenty. So this is the language for, in the, so Article Twenty is, as the board had discussed previously, was to permit Lynch to continue to use this access. So on July eighteenth, the, the planning board voted to approve the application of Borrego Solar Systems, and Condition Five and Six noted that when they surveyed the property, they discovered the driveway they'd been using all these years was actually on the town's property. So the board voted in Condition Five that the applicant may continue to utilize the construction, constructed access road on the abutting town parcel, previously used as shown on the approved site plan, until such a time as the Board of Selectmen recommends and town meeting votes to grant the application, applicant, a permanent easement to use the constructed access road for its purpose. It's expected the easement will be presented to the town, to the November nine, two thousand nineteen ATM for action thereon. In the event of unfavorable town meeting action, this condition must be revised. Item number six, condition number six, was to be formally defined in an easement in referencing Condition Seven, that the applicant shall reconstruct approximately two hundred feet of that initial entrance road to the intersection of their alternate fourteen-foot-wide gravel road pursuant to the town subdivision bylaws for a minor street roadway, and revise the required stormway infrastructure based on subdivision plans prepared in Condition Number Six. What that essentially says is that you'll rebuild the road, and you'll rebuild it like a subdivision, so if the town decides they have some designs on their property, they will have a fully constructed road off of Blacksmith Shop Road with adequate drainage in order to allow the town to move forward with whatever they might put on that piece of property without having to go through this additional expense of reconstruct, of constructing a road at that pro, area. And to remind the board, when we looked at this on the plan, though, this is the aerial photography that shows where the current access road is on the wrong side of the, of the lot line. If we looked at where that road might be, if the board said, "No, absolutely not, you have to put a new driveway in," that driveway would be further to the north and closer to the abutters areas. And the information that Mr. Kirk has presented shows the, the town's property, what currently exists, and the fact that he has made a case, and town council has not said, though that's not quite true, that they may actually have access to it as a prescriptive easement prior to the town taking ownership of the property. While the town is not subject to a prescriptive easement, if their rights predated the town taking the property, there may be. So we had this discussion previously, we looked at this as a benefit to the town to say, "Well, they're using this, let them use it, let them improve it, and let's not put another hole in the trees up the road in order to create another access." So this is the, the information that Attorney Lynch presented, and he is here to address those. The last slide that we put together just shows where that access is, and this is on the site plan, and this area here is to reconstruct that on the slide on the right for that two hundred or so feet, and this is where their alternative access is. The alternative access is in there in the event that the Eversource doesn't give them permission to continue using their access that they use currently for gravel removal for the solar arrays, and at that point, they might have to make that first left turn there. So at this point, I'll sit down, and Attorney Lynch can answer any questions you might have about that.
Does the board have any questions?
No.
We discussed that pretty thoroughly when we were looking at the plan.
I just think the point is, they probably have this by adverse possession, and so by doing this, we get a finished road that create, that helps our other property, and we don't have to fight a court case of adverse possession, which we would probably lose. I just think it's a great, I...
I think the town wins.
It wins big. We get a, we get street frontage on a piece of land that now is subdividable because it now has adequate access, which it doesn't have, has more adequate access, and it has now.
So, this is on petition of Gerald Lynch, and I think we need to give a positive referral to town meeting on the warrant, but I need a motion to that.
Yeah, I, I move that we give a positive motion to Article Twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Brett?
Was there any discussion to be allowed on that?
Was there any discussion to be allowed on that?
No, this is, these are just the Planning Board giving our referrals.
You've got to get elected to consider them in these ones.
The, we had public hearings on these articles, but...
Oh, you already had those?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, and so now, we have a presentation by Peter Clark of the Charter Review Committee, and I asked, because I figured this would be going on for quite some time tonight, that he limited to only that which is currently on the warrant that has to do with planning. And he very kindly agreed to do so and to try to keep it at around ten minutes, which is practice for town meeting, because that's what they allow.
Article twenty-four.
Good evening. I sent to you some copies of this. Have you, I have copies for you, if you haven't gotten them already. Yes, should read Article twenty-four, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine, plus some other materials that we will not discuss, I guess, tonight.
And those, they're in here too, that we can look at?
Yes, they are there also. If you all have copies, I won't pass these out. If anybody else would like a copy, they're... Would you like to ask me questions, or would you like me to give you an overview of what is there?
Quick overview would be nice.
I think that would be nice, because it's from your perspective.
From our perspective, we, we were looking at planning broadly and the alignment of plans. Some of that is in the current articles to go forward, and some of it will be held for consideration for another year down the road. So, what you have in front of you is Article twenty-four, which deals with a range of terms that are being substituted for or replaced relative to your work. The most important is that we are recommending that the term "master plan" be struck from the document and local comprehensive plan put in its place. That's a small change in the definition section and a replacement of the term throughout the document, and that reflects the fact that local comprehensive plan is what you actually do in terms of creating a master plan. The, the second change, which is not so particularly focused on you as Board of Selectmen, is to replace the term "local, long-range plan" with "strategic plan," and that reflects the reality of the fact that the Board of Selectmen do annually renew a five-year plan. We saw long-range plan generally applying to a five-to-ten-year lookout, and that is not what we do with the Board of Selectmen, so we changed that term. One of the issues is to try to get the strongest alignment possible between their strategic planning and your local comprehensive planning. So, that's Article twenty-four as it applies to the Planning Board. I'll go through them all, and then you can ask me questions if you'd like. Article twenty-seven, and I should stress that the explanations that you see in this document are not the final explanations. The Board of Selectmen have not voted those final explanations yet. What you see here is wording that we submitted to the board for their consideration. So, it may change, the actual language in the warrant may change from what is in front of you. And if you look at Article twenty-seven, you, you see that what has changed, if you look, if you look at that top half of the page, you have the new article language, B. You have our explanation, and you have the old article language, B., and you can see the changes we've made in that language. It, it had read that the board would hold a joint meeting with you at least twice a year for consideration of the town's master plan. We have broadened that because of the importance and the value of the Board of Selectmen currently holding joint meetings with a range of important committees. Under policy leadership, we felt it should not just refer to the Planning Board, but should refer to a range of governmental bodies that have to do with policymaking in the town. So, under the new language, the reference to the Planning Board, meeting twice a year devoted exclusively to the town's master plan, is not there as strongly as it has been in the past, but under the Planning Board requiring two meetings is still in the charter in Section C four, six, E two. So, you haven't, that issue, that requirement, has not been removed from the charter. It has been removed in this location, but it exists in another location. And I think what it, for us, what it tries to do is honor the work that the Board of Selectmen has done across a range of policies with a range of governmental bodies, and reinforces that work while still honoring your importance in that process. So, I will leave it there unless you have questions at the end. Under Article twenty-nine, the prior language put the importance of recommendations in a subordinate clause. If you look at the bottom of Page three, C four, six, the old language reads, "Whereas the Planning Board recommends, whenever the Planning Board recommends proposed amendments." And, and we have tried to strengthen the importance of your work in those, in the new language, under Article twenty-nine D., to read, "The Planning Board shall recommend proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws and shall provide detailed written explanation." So, we saw that as a strengthening of the importance of your recommendations and their alignment with the local comprehensive plan. So, that's a brief overview of the three articles that impact the Planning Board. There were, as you will see in the following pages, some others, and that will await further discussion and consideration for November of two thousand and twenty. The goal was to try to honor your work with the local comprehensive planning and ensure that the town is paying attention to it and aligning its other planning, both its strategic plan and its capital improvement plan with some of that work.
Any comments from the board? Yes, Charlotte?
Um, thank you. Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen tried very hard in the planning of two of their meetings to make sure that we were working on that alignment, so this is a very welcome, a direction of change, and, and particular change. I'm sorry we're not discussing the others tonight, but these, to me at least, are welcome changes. As I read Article twenty-seven and listen to your explanation, that means that you're really adding a requirement to the Board of Selectmen that in addition to the two meetings with the Planning Board alone, they will also hold joint meetings. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. Good. Thank you.
Well?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I'm glad you're keeping that requirement to meet with the Planning Board and Board of Selectmen. They're two of the elected boards that we're referring to here. And when we've had those meetings, they've been very successful, and everyone's been very happy with it. Unfortunately, we haven't had them that often because of time constraints and a lot of their other issues, so I'm glad that's still in there. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and we have recognized that with past boards, it's been even harder sometimes to get those joint meetings, and they often have not been focused on the local comprehensive plan, but on other issues. So, the, the importance is to, and reinforce the value of those joint meetings and hopefully not lose the attention of the local comprehensive plan.
Thank you, yes.
Jim?
I'm just concerned that the Selectmen have always substituted the grand plan with all the other boards and call it, I mean, we have not had two meetings with them, even though the charter calls for it, and you're saying it's still in here, but every time they just placate us, invite us to a meeting with five other boards, and we talk about everything under the sun except for what we want to talk about. The point we were trying to make is we want to have our two meetings with them. Period.
Yes, I, I think, I, I think we, as a Charter Review Committee, acknowledge that you've had difficulty getting those sessions exclusively on that plan. We have, we had other language that isn't here now, but hopefully will come a year from now, that reinforces the importance of the alignment of other planning with your local comprehensive plan. I think that having, what you saw in the past, Mr. Fox, is that having the language in the charter doesn't make it happen, and we confront that issue as we try to change the charter to strengthen that, but we were looking at the broader issue of reinforcing the value of joint meetings for townwide planning.
And I appreciate the, the inclusion of the, and maybe the expansion of the use of the local comprehensive plan, because what, since that has come out and it's being such a nice concise document, we see applicants coming in with, with the language from that plan, and it's, I think it's cut through a lot of stuff for people to help them with their planning. It's reinforced opinions on things, so I, I think, other than the, the old one, which we were told was just a bookend, it's a much more used document, it's a living document, and I'm glad to see that it's being included in the language of the charter. Thank you.
Well, the whole committee's been concerned about it, but I want to acknowledge that Mr. McCaffrey has been a, a driving voice in the importance of that plan and the alignment of other plans with it.
I'd like to say one further thing. I missed going to the presentation that you made to the Board of Selectmen because I was away. I was sorry I missed it, but I heard a number of things repeated to me and was very startled that the, one of the objections to the things that might come up later is that it would be interfering in operations. I believe that our planning is intended to interfere in operations and to have an impact on it, and that that would provide an evaluative function for the plan. A plan really isn't a plan if there's not any way to evaluate whether or not it had an effect, and I really like the direction that you were going in. I hope you manage to come up with some language that will satisfy that complaint. I would be interested in hearing in what way being operational would be a bad thing for the local comprehensive plan, and hope that we can get some form of it eventually.
Well, I look forward to some further exchange with your, your committee, your board with us about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, does this process go on for another year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I thought it was, that explains a lot.
Though, the Board of Selectmen declined to approve, or reject it, however you want to look at that, three articles, but they, they expressed approval of the intention of the articles to clarify and, and try to get firm language about the alignment. They didn't like some of the language that was there. So, we will continue to work on that, but it's too late for this November, it'll go to next November.
You put a lot of hard work into this, your whole committee, and I thank you.
Well, thank you for your input on this. Thanks.
Can I ask you a quick question? When I was on the Charter Review last time, they never terminated that, that committee. Does your committee continue after these recommendations fail or pass at town meeting, and you continue to provide recommendations, or do you finish your work at town meeting?
Well, we saw our work in two parts, Articles for this fall's town meeting and other recommendations. We intended to complete it by the end of the calendar year. Now that some work has been deferred until November two thousand and twenty, I, as Chair, do not plan to continue to meet regularly until November two thousand and twenty, but to try to get that job done and put it on the shelf and then reprise it before November two thousand and twenty. So, I hope, I hope our, the substantive work will be done this year, but then we will, we, we are empowered to come back and, and continue that phase of it. We, like any advisory committee, exist at the will of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
And I don't know whether the board realizes this, but I think you do, that we have not done this before, where we've taken Articles that might have some effect on the Planning Board, but we don't have to vote on them at all. So, really, what the purpose of this is, is for us to give input and for us to say, "God bless and Godspeed," I think, and I, from the sounds of it, I think...
At least.
So, from the sounds of it, I think that this is the consensus of the board. We appreciate everything you've done.
Yep.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we have a presentation from the Energy Committee on the Stretch Code, and Megan Ansler is going to present this to us. And again, it's the same kind of thing. We want to hear what's going on, and do we say, "Yep, we really like this," but we don't vote anything to the warrant.
Do I just touch that?
It's not even a touch.
Okay, good thing. All right. Again, Megan Ansler, Chair of the Energy Committee. Thank you for having me here this evening. I just wanted to take the opportunity, I think the last time I was here before you all, a few months ago, I mentioned that the Energy Committee is very much in support of the Stretch Code, and I wanted to give a little bit broader context in terms of why we are supportive of that. It is not an article that we have on the town meeting warrant, it is actually a petitioner's article, but it is definitely something that the committee is very concerned with, and we feel that it is tied directly to the local comprehensive plan, and the energy element, Policy One and Policy Three directly relate to this. So, the Stretch Energy Code is actually part of the existing building code. It is the performance path, which actually treats new construction as a whole system. It is a pathway for us, the adoption of the Stretch Code is a pathway for us, the Town of Falmouth, to become a green community through the Department of Energy Resources program, which avails us to pretty substantial funding to fund upgrades of energy systems and energy coordinator, can be pretty creative in terms of how the funding is utilized, as long as it is utilized for town buildings and school buildings and that sort of thing. It is a pathway, the Green Communities is, is a tool for us to get to the goals of the Green, the Global Warming Solutions Act, which has this pretty rigorous standard where the requirement is to reduce between ten and twenty percent of our greenhouse gas emissions within less than six months by two thousand and twenty, and then this eighty percent reduction by two thousand and fifty, which again, is a pretty substantial goal to attain. We have completed four of the five criteria that need to be adopted in order to become a green community. We have done as-of-right citing for renewable energy research and development within the Technical Park. We have expedited permitting for said R and D facilities in the Tech Park. We have adopted the vehicle procurement policy, and we have done an energy baseline and an action plan which needs to be updated upon or prior to the submission, should we pass the Stretch Code. And I just also want to point out the fact that if we can become a green community, this is substantial funding that really helps, you know, helps everybody as taxpayers, and it helps with the, with the, both the school and the, and the town's budgets. So, I wanted to draw a parallel to the Community Preservation Fund, in the sense that this is something that the Town of Falmouth is, has been part of, and it, it acts in a similar fashion, in the sense that it's funding that is put into a large fund, and then the town is able to pull back out of that. And there are some similar objectives in terms of why the funds are put in place. Obviously, the Green Communities is definitely this pathway, as I said, this tool to helping us reduce the state's greenhouse gas emissions, but it's also about keeping energy dollars within the state and local economies, stimulating economic growth within the clean energy industry and having that within the, within the Commonwealth, and really helping municipalities take tangible action in terms of reducing their, their greenhouse gas emissions and helping to save money, because if we have fifty-year-old boilers that are, you know, struggling along in the basements of schools and in town halls and different buildings, we definitely need to address that, because that's, that's not, they're not super efficient, they're not saving us any taxpayer dollars, they're definitely not saving energy. So, that's, again, the benefit that comes back to the municipality. And I will say, since two thousand and nine, the, the Green Communities Act was passed in two thousand and eight, and if we do sort of back-of-the-envelope calculation, the Town of Falmouth has left over a million dollars on the table by not becoming a green community. So, that's pretty substantial when you think about capital improvements and things that... So that's pretty substantial when you think about capital improvements and things that are related to energy that, that come before town meeting. So I, I urge that we, I strongly urge that we become part of this because we are paying into it through the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. And it's just, it's the same sort of perspective of why we should all take advantage of the Cape Light Compax programs for energy efficiency, whether it's in our businesses or in our homes or in our nonprofit organizations. Those are dollars that we pay into. It's like a giant piggy bank. We might as well take those dollars back out. And so that we've definitely heard some, some issues brought up around the, this being harder and, you know, more expensive for, for builders. And I will make the clarification, this is only for new construction. The discussions that I have had and, and different folks that have been proponents of this have had with the state and, and other entities that are looking at affordable housing and, and how do we make that not cost more? And really looking at, I, I put a photo in here of the net zero project that Habitat for Humanity did in Harwich. And, and there was a really great piece that was on WCAI about the occupants of this development here, where they were so excited because of the fact that they were moving into a home that was really energy efficient and in years past had been living in rental units where they couldn't afford to pay the utilities. The rent is very high and then you're also living in a completely energy dysfunctional unit. And so this model of being really proactive and, and making a little bit more of an investment upfront in making that home both healthier and more energy resilient, both to heat and to cold, is really important as we think about climate disruption and what it's doing when we have super hot summers and kind of crazy temperatures in the winter time. So, but just to note, in terms of the, the additional costs that one might incur when looking at having a, a Stretch Code compliant home, we're talking in the range, and again, this is based on data from the Department of Energy Resources, of up to a thousand doll, sorry, $3,000. And I looked at, you know, in terms of a percentage, if you're looking at something that's in the $275,000 range, that's about 1 percent of the entire budget. And if we think about architects' fees and all the other things that come into play that can drive those costs up, thinking about making a better building envelope, 1 percent seems to me like a, an okay incremental upcharge to make that cost less over the course of the occupants' residence in the facility. The other point I want to make is that I think it's really important that we think of buildings as a system and that we don't just cherry pick things individually and that through the Stretch Code's performance path, you have the ability to look at and evaluate different things within the building. So it's not all about insulation. It can be about solar on the roof. It can be about a heat recovery ventilating system, low, low-flow showerheads, LED lighting. All of these different things comprise the energy budget, if you will, of the home and sort of how you, how do you reach that HERS rating of 55, which is the goal for a Stretch Code home. So that's pretty much what I had and I didn't know if you all had any questions.
Bob?
What's been the blowback from, from builders? Because it seems at town meeting, it's the builders that get up and, and try and convince people not to, to do this.
Yes.
Has it always just been the cost?
I, I mean, I, I do think that there are a number of different issues that have come up and unfortunately, we haven't had the opportunity on town meeting floor to rebut those. You know, whether it's talking about excessively thick walls, you know, instead of actually talking about the R-value of a wall. And, you know, I think, I think the cost and the overregulation, that, that has been definitely something that has been brought forward, saying that, you know, this is just another thing that we have to deal with. But I will say that a lot of the builders that I have talked with have said, you know what? It's, it's fine. We're, we're there. We're already building to the Stretch Code. And, and what's the big deal? Like now we can actually, I think they've come like through a bit of learning curve, if you will, and are now realizing like the HERS raters are our friends. We can call them up. They will help us through these different processes. And if we want to know, like, should we install this boiler? Or we should go with mini splits? Or, you know, what should we do? And what about this insulation? That those, they become, you know, advisors and, and can really help builders through that whole process. So.
Because that was the point I was getting to because I'm, I'm building with Habitat and, and I, I felt that we've already been there and maybe even gone beyond.
Yes.
In a lot of cases, because we get very good HERS ratings on our houses.
Yes.
And where we can put solar, we do. We're using Mitsubishi heat, heat pumps. I mean, it's the whole package, so.
Excellent. John?
I just want to say that the HERS raters are our friends because we have to use them now. The Stretch Code requires that a house become 20 percent more efficient than our new energy code that we're just adapting to. Now it's about a year and a half old and it's mandatory. The houses today, with today's code are built so tightly that you have to induce fresh air into the house. You have to have an ERV or an HRV that runs as much as 24 hours a day to bring fresh air into the house because the houses are built so tightly. And I personally am not an engineer, but I have concerns that 20 years from now, we're going to find out this has been a big mistake to make the house this tight. We have to caulk all the outside walls. You have no idea how much has to be done and to have to go another 20 percent, I, I don't see the reason for it. And, and I have grave concerns myself. She talks about making it healthier. I don't think it makes it healthier, but I don't see the reason to have the Stretch Code mandatory.
Charlotte?
As I recall the conversations at town meeting last year, when indeed it was the builders speaking very feelingly against it, was the added ventilation they have to install in order to overcome that tightness, it was primarily the cost for them in the building and in the people who were buying the properties. They felt that they were already meeting a good standard and didn't need it and they surely didn't want it. Is it your sense that they have changed somehow in this past year?
Well, I would say that we have certainly spoken with local builders who are in support of it and, you know, some of them literally in the last couple of weeks, in light of the scientific data that's come out through the UN and we're, you know, looking at a climate crisis and people saying, you know what? If, if it has to be done, we will do it. We're already doing it in many instances. But, you know, when the, I think that, we have to take action in some capacity and this is merely a, a vehicle to, to giving the town some more money to take action, take some of those tangible actions. So I, I totally understand what Mr. Druley's issues are and, and I, again, we're trying to look at the, the bigger picture. We looked at the connection to the local comprehensive plan. We look at the connection to the climate action, the Climate Protection Action Plan that's adopted, been adopted by the Town of Falmouth. It's all about trying to support positive policy that reduces our overall impact on warming gases in the climate.
Is, is there some separation between the houses that are built pretty much to the Stretch Code now here in town and those that aren't? Is it that more expensive houses already reach the Stretch Code and less expensive houses don't? Is there some difference here?
No. I mean, I, my understanding is that affordable housing units, if they want to take an advantage of any of the state programs, that they actually have to exceed the Stretch Code. So I know that was definitely an issue that was brought up at town meeting, you know, what about affordable housing and this is making it more expensive? But there are also programs through MassSave that help offset those costs, that, you know, the, this additional cost for having the HERS raider and, and trying to, you know, getting to that higher score of, of 55. And, and as Mr. Leary indicated, the Habitat homes are, I think they're like surpassing those, that 55. They're well below the 55 HERS rating with the objective of making it less expensive for the occupants to pay their energy bills.
And it was said last year also that the majority of towns on the Cape have already adopted the Stretch Code.
That's correct. And I would say since then, more have adopted it, so.
So now of the 15 towns?
Where there's 11 of the 15, I believe, have adopted.
Thank you.
Jim?
The cost of construction, just in my observations, has gone from, in the last 10 years for a house, $150 a square foot, to over $300 a square foot, while the value of the land, because when you build the house and put the land on the ex-suffle, has actually gone down because the growth in construction costs primarily from code changes is what's driving it up, is, is driving these costs up to, to build a 2,000-square-foot house is $300 to $600,000. How much more can we throw at them? It's we are driving the building, the, the changes we do in building codes are driving the cost. You ask anybody, they're escalating the biggest expense we see. The, the value of the land has actually been driven down because the construction cost is going up higher than market. So to get equilibrium, in order to sell a house, you're going to drop the land value down to build it, to get it so you can make it and sell it, so people aren't paying over market. So you can say, just keep throwing it at it, 1 percent doesn't matter, but we're already underwater. You're, you know, it's on the construction cost. So at some point, it's got to back off a little bit.
Paul, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I've got a little different approach to that. We've had the Stretch Code before town meeting, two, maybe three times. It's failed every time. And the last time, as Bob indicated, one of the contracts in particular was arguing that it would increase the costs. But as you indicated, a lot of contracts are actually meeting the requirements of Stretch Code and there are benefits to the town. And I think Mr. Grant has been made several presentations about Stretch Code to this, to this board over the last several months. So there's a lot of interest in the Stretch Code here and I think in general, the planning board individually are in favor of the Stretch Code. I think it's an important thing. I, I certainly would encourage it. And the costs, I think, are getting closer and closer together, so I don't think it's that much of a difference anymore that seems to be indicating by others.
John?
I just want to reiterate again, to meet the new energy code, when I build a house, I have to have 44 inches of insulation in the ceiling, R, R44. I have to have 97 percent efficient hot water heater, minimum. Have to have 96 percent efficient, minimum, gas furnace. If you have warm air heat in, in your house, you have to have duct testing, pressurized duct testing. Used to be 5 percent leakages, now it's 3 and 1/2 percent. If you don't meet the 3 and 1/2 percent, you fail. Every house, when it's all done, before you get the occupancy permit, the HERS raider comes in and they put a blower door test on. They open up the front door and they put a fan, they seal it, put a fan on. They suck all the air out of the house, out of the house. If there's too much air loss, then you don't get an occupancy permit. You have to finish off the outside walls in the basement, insulate it and finish them off or find some way to stop the small leaks that there are. And I have to have air induced into the house to make it livable because if you don't, you're going to have mold, you're going to have the sore throats, you're going to have the eye irritation. And for me to build a house, I have to bring air in and, and, I mean, it's just, and, and then to go another 20 percent beyond that, how do you get that other 20 percent? Probably have thicker windows. You're going to have to find some way to do the other 20 percent. And it's another $3,000, minimum.
20 percent of a very small number, though.
I'm sorry?
20 percent of a very small diminishing number, then, right?
20 percent more efficient than the new energy code that we're under right now.
Oh.
So to me, if you, if somebody wants to do that, that's wonderful. But to make it mandatory for every house to have to do it, I don't want to impose that regulation. So that's how I feel about it.
And I want you all to know that this is Article 18. It was on petition of Grant Walker and others. Yes? It's your article. I'm assuming Megan has no.
I, I don't have any other further comments.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Grant Walker, 71 Philadelphia Street. Yes, I am the citizen who filed the petition for this article. And if I may, with all due respect to Mr. Druley, I'd just like to say, everything that I'm learning about the Stretch Code says pretty much what he's saying, except for this 20 percent idea. The Green Communities Division, the Department of Energy Resources, says that since the base code, which is what I believe Mr. Druley is speaking about, the, what we call the base energy code, where everybody's already required to do all those things that he has been speaking of, but the Stretch Code now requires not 20 percent, but 11 percent more efficiency because the base code is requiring a house, a newly constructed house, to be at a score on the scale of numbers of approximately 65. And the Stretch Code house is required to have a score no higher than 55. The Stretch Code is like the game of golf. The lower the score, the better the game. The lower the score, the less wasted shots, so to speak. So everything that I'm learning about the Stretch Code, everything that I'm learning from the Department of Energy Resources, the people who train building inspectors on the Stretch Code that I've spoken to, say it's an 11 percent difference. But it doesn't mean 11 percent more tight. It does not mean 11 percent more ventilation. It does not mean 11 percent more this or 11 percent more that, as Ms. Ansler emphasized. It's the total performance of the house, the building, as a single system. So you get a score for everything combined, not this, not that. So your score, your overall total score has to be 11 percent better. And there are many different ways to achieve that score. So I, I think that's something to be taking into consider, excuse me, consideration. And if I may, since many months ago, Mr. Druley might remember that we had a conversation about this and I know that you're concerned and I think you have very serious concerns that we have to discuss, I would like to submit to the board through Mr. Druley, if I would be allowed, two pages from the Department of Energy Resources, oh, I'm sorry, that spell out, base code, stretch code, this, that, what, what you have to do, where the differences are and where there are no differences. And there are no differences as far as sealing or preventing air infiltration, no differences in any of the insulations. Stretch code, base code, the same. Same test, blower door test already being done, is done with the Stretch Code. It's the overall performance of the house. The builder has to be creative, has to be inventive and find that way to make it a little more energy efficiency. You can do it with the boiler. You can do it with a hot water system. You can do it with splitters, heat pumps and so on. There's a variety of ways you can do it. You could, as a builder, do it with a little extra insulation if you wanted to. You could, as a builder, do it with a little better windows if you wanted to. No one way to do it. And the second point I'd like to make is that cost, you have to take the cost in the context of living in the building. And all the analysis, what is called by the Department of Energy Resources, their cash flow analysis suggests that in the first year, the additional amount in the down payment, the additional amount in the mortgage payment, month by month, is offset, more than offset. There's a positive net cash flow in the first year and every year thereafter because of the rebates and then because of the savings on the bills for heat, electricity, gas, whatever. So I think that's a very important consideration. It's very important, I think, especially for people in affordable housing, to be in an efficient home, an energy efficient home, because it is so stressful and it requires them to give up so much else if they because it is so stressful, and it requires them to give up so much else, if they have to pay so much for utilities.
Mr. Walker, we've got to move on.
I thank you for the opportunity. I'll give these to the board through...
Yes, please, go ahead.
Mr. Druley, if I may.
Yes, you may. And so the board is a little bit mixed on the support of it.
I'm in favor.
But we're not voting on anything. This is a presentation, so that if anybody wishes to speak at town meeting, they've got some more background, a little bit of advanced knowledge for preparation, if they wish to speak. Okay.
So we're not going to recommend it one way or another?
No, these are hearing what is coming up that would have something to do perhaps with the way we behave as a planning board in requirements. This one, not necessarily, but, yeah, it does, in a way, too, lighting of the house, all kinds of things. So anyway, no, we're not voting on this, because we don't give a recommendation on the article in the warrant. But we're hearing, as I said, this is a new wrinkle that we're doing for the first time. We may not ever wish to do it again, I don't know. It's up to, well, no, it's up to the board whether they would like to hear things that might impinge on planning.
Yeah, well, I think when it comes from different committees, although this is a petition as article, not a committee article, but...
Right.
Yeah, when it does, in fact, has something to do with a committee that's in town, it has something to do with the LCP, I think it's worthwhile to listen.
This, of course, is in the LCP.
Yeah, right.
So are there any committee reports tonight?
Only once.
Gone already, okay. I have an announcement to make, it's been made before, and I'll make it again, because I think this is critical. Tomorrow evening at six thirty at the library in the Herman Room, there is going to be the Affordable Housing Summit, titled The Face of Affordable Housing in Falmouth: Myth Versus Reality. It's cosponsored by the Falmouth Planning Board and Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee. Now, you know, we voted to cosponsor it, and they did all the legwork, and they've done an admirable job. And the reason I'm going into detail on this a bit is because we have an audience that listens to us, and I think it would be important to understand that there are quite a number of different speakers here. They're going to have people who live in affordable housing. Eric Turkington, Treasurer of the Falmouth Housing Corporation, will detail the past, present, and future of affordable housing in Falmouth. Let's see. There are going to be comments and testimonials from members of the community who live in affordable housing units. Then there's going to be a panel discussion that follows that, aimed at assessing affordable housing needs and strategies in the Falmouth business community, public services, and healthcare industry. The community invited William Zammer, you know his name, he's been very active in Falmouth, and he has his own housing that he's had to provide for his employees. He's speaking about how difficult it is for his restaurant employees to find housing. Our Chief of Police, Edward Dunn, and Paul Nizwiki, Vice President of Strategy and Government Affairs for Cape Cod Health Fair, will also join in on this discussion of workforce housing. And then Christian Valley of the Valley Group will address affordable housing from a developer's perspective. So there are all of these things that are going to be part of this one housing summit, and I think people will find it fascinating to listen where a lot of this comes together. I would also ask that as many of you can, since we're cosponsoring it, try to attend that tomorrow night, six thirty at the Herman Room at the library. Thank you. General correspondence, the infamous purple file, let's see what's in here tonight. Aha, we have precinct meetings. Are you sending this out to everybody?
Yeah, I believe we did.
Oh, okay. Hmm.
Late this afternoon.
Oh, okay, because it wasn't there when I looked today.
Three forty P.M., I received this, and we forwarded it shortly after.
Aha, okay, thank you very much. So you'll have it in here. We have a memo from Frank Duffy, Town Council. Tom, did you want me to read this, or just in here, or what?
I think for the time being, it's finding the correspondence, the gist of the correspondence is in regard to the vote the planning board took on Lewis Neck Road, when the planning board voted to say, we find that Lewis Neck Road is adequate access for affordable housing. There were a number of different amendments to that motion, it's only for Housing Trust, with the support of the Fire Department. And essentially, Town Council's letter said, if you make a decision and you defer your final decision to someone else, such as, is it okay with the Fire Department? And that's not really a decision the planning board made. So the planning board will have to revisit that issue at some point, and that's the nature of the letter.
If anybody wants to see the details, it's going to be up in the planning office.
I believe we might have forwarded that late this afternoon as well.
That was late this afternoon, too.
We had a very busy late afternoon.
Did you send that out?
I believe we did.
Just a quick point, we always seem to defer to the Fire Department, so does that mean we can't do that anymore publicly?
Not in a decision. If we get the information from the Fire Department as a referral, we take that into account. But when you make it as part of your decision, because you don't have the information, we can't...
So no decisions to all referrals are written, we don't have a problem? That's what I was just trying to get at, good. We should, that makes a lot of sense.
And then there is from the poorhouse slash Marx Building Advisory Committee to Megan English Braga. Anyway, they're raising certain concerns about parking issues and...
In regard to the site plan for the senior center, and its impact on the Marx Building from their perspective.
A lot of this, I think, has probably been covered in the paper, and I know I've seen some of these pictures in the paper, too.
Is this about the light thing?
Yeah, well, that's part of it, yeah. So there are a number of things that they're bringing out in here, and again, it's in the planning office, if you want to see any of the details, but it is, to a degree, more extensive than I think you probably want me to be.
That was sent out to us, too. I think that, was it?
I don't know about that. I know that we...
It had photos in it.
Meeting day is always very busy.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what time it was sent out, because I think the last I opened my computer was around three thirty or something like that, and didn't see it then.
Four twenty-five was the precinct meeting.
Well, no wonder I didn't see it. So, okay.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Was, that's the site plan that we approved, right? We did site plan approval on that?
Correct.
And we had a hearing, and they were all here, no one brought it up at the hearings, but when they saw what was built, now they're saying, well, wait a minute.
Correct.
Yeah.
But they did have an opportunity to come to the hearings, it was presented, our engineers, our town engineers went all over it.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, they looked at everything, and then they, so after it's built, then they're saying, we don't like this.
Well, let me say that, two issues with lighting around the Marx Building. One is that to the right of the Marx Building poorhouse, when you come in, there's supposed to be a pedestrian scale light there. And the contractor put in the base for a light pole, like you'd have in the parking lot.
Was that shown in their plan, or is that a change in the plan?
That's just somebody putting the wrong thing in.
So that would be corrected, when you go do your check, you would have said, hey, this isn't on the plan, it has to be changed.
So they, we've notified them of that when it first came up, when Ed had added, asked me about what was going on with the Marx Building, why are they, why are they clearing to the property, to the edge of the foundation?
So they weren't following the plan?
They did not, in that case. Now, on the backside, where there was a light post that was proposed, on the backside of the building, and now the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation essentially say, you have to preserve the building, which you see from the street, so you can change the backyard if you want, but you can't change the front of the house. So in the case of the second lamp post, it's behind the building, but it appears, from what we've seen on the ground, that they might have put that in the wrong place. It was essentially supposed to be over a bit more to, looking at the Marx poorhouse building, a bit over to the left, and it appears as though they put it maybe, and I can't tell you what, but a bit over to the right, so it's sort of in a different quadrant of the building. It should have been to the left of the rear entrance, and it appears to be more to the right of the rear entrance. So that's one of those instances where someone put the light in, and it doesn't appear to be put in per the plan.
Are they going to change them, then?
I know they are certainly going to change the one, the pedestrian scale one, on the right side of the property, because we've had that discussion internally, pointed it out, I pointed in a memo with the pictures, that the, this is supposed to be a pedestrian lamp post on the right, but it appears as though the one on the back may have been just put in the wrong place. And of course, putting it in the wrong place isn't just simply moving a pole, because there's wires to it, so they'd have to do some sort of junction box, some sort of kind of, so the one in the rear remains unresolved, but the one to the right of the building is supposed to be a pedestrian scale light, and that will be replaced.
Thank you.
Okay. So are there future agenda items? Tom and I have been talking about a number of things that will be seeing come up. Is there anything else anybody wants to be, okay? The next meeting is October fifteenth.
Okay. There is a site visit tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, I should remind you, but we've had memos coming out, to the effect of seven o'clock tomorrow morning.
I have your homework here with me. These are the site plans, what was previously approved and what is being requested. So I'll give these to you this evening before you leave. So we are eleven o'clock on site.
You're passing it out tonight?
I am.
Are those any different from the ones you sent to us today?
Chances are, they're not.
Okay.
I might, I have...
I just don't want to be carrying paper around if I already have it.
We're just trying to keep off your personal printing budgets as much as we can. I know they pay you guys a lot of money due to this job, none, I think. So we just don't want to have the onus for printing these things on your nickel, so I've got copies for you.
That's much appreciated. I have a question. You were working on a presentation for Form Base Code.
Yes.
Yes, what is, what is the plan for presentation of the presentation?
Well, the plan for the presentation was to do it this evening. However, in discussing things with the chair earlier today, she said, am I just overlooking this discussion on the agenda? And I said, well, certainly it must be. And then I looked at the agenda, and said, no, no, we, all the eyes that looked at it, we neglected to put the discussion about our funding on the agenda for tonight. So there's slides, there's a lovely presentation, ready to go, it's simply not on our agenda. So we will be having that discussion on our October fifteenth meeting, and my apologies for not having it fully on the agenda. Do you remember, it started off as a warrant article?
Yes.
And then it became this component of the capital, non-capital plan?
Right.
So we nailed every article, and then some, but for whatever reason, and you can say the planner, didn't have it on the agenda, because that's my job to make sure those things get on there.
So where then, within the agenda of town meeting, will the presentation come? As part of the Finance Committee?
Well, much like some of the things we talked about tonight, we don't actually make a recommendation for those funding articles. We submitted it, and it's implied that we support it, but I wanted to have that discussion about what is the funding for, because I've had these questions from some folks on the Finance Committee, and was very much hoping to have that discussion tonight and point out what we're asking, what we're requesting, but as I said, it's not on the agenda, and I didn't want to be...
Would it then be part of the committee report section of town meeting that precedes the warrant articles?
You know, I suppose it could be. I don't, I haven't sort of game planned that to that extent.
We just discovered that it was omitted from the agenda, so...
Well, but we have discussed, the committee here has discussed, the board, having some sort of an education program in connection with form-based zoning, and this was to have been part of it.
Right.
So they're finding a place for it. Jim is planning, is working now with FCTV on a presentation, so there's another iron in the fire. But it'd be a shame to lose that opportunity, when we've rounded up a lot of the people who are eventually going to be voting on it.
If it passes on the blanket vote, we don't have to present anything. I think we need to be prepared for a presentation if it doesn't pass on the blanket vote, and I would be glad to do it. I mean, I've been practicing my PowerPoint presentation on Form Base Code for a year. So if we wanted to do it, I'd be glad to do it. But the goal is, is it passes on the blanket, we don't have to talk about it.
And also, Jim, if we had to speak to it, remember, it's got to be truncated to no more than five minutes, I believe. I think that's town meeting rules.
That's not the, well, it's not an...
An applicant, but we're not...
We're not an applicant.
I think there's a real advantage to having it as part of a committee report, if that would be in any way allowable, because it's true, getting it, getting the vote is really critical, and we hope to get that, but getting people to be in favor, but really, and to know about it, is important.
Can I just make a point of order? Are we adjourned?
I don't think we did yet. So we're still being televised, and we're discussing something that wasn't on the
agenda?
We're discussing something, why we're not discussing it.
We're discussing an agenda item for the future. I thought that was what we were doing.
Well, we usually discuss it in the future, but this has been coming up as to, we forgot to put it on the agenda for tonight, and it is applicable towards our town meeting presentation, maybe, we're not sure. And we're going to bring it up on the fifteenth and for follow-through on that.
So it's a future agenda item?
Yes.
Which is on the agenda?
Yeah.
Really?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Bob already did that, we weren't, okay. We are adjourned.
Thank you.